Five, three, your line six, it under way. Thank you very much for everybody being here. Welcome to our council meeting for tonight is Monday twenty twenty five, first second year gone. If I might just move. Devonport City Council acknowledges and pays respect to the Palomba Pachanah people. As the traditional and original owners of Lutuwein are continuing custodians of this label which we gather. We also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal elders past and present. All persons in attendance advise that it is council policy to recall council meetings. In accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website. For a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be live streamed on council's YouTube channel. Thanks to councillors for being here. I do note that we do have one apology tonight and that's councillor Burkinstein. And if I might ask my councillors, is there any declarations of interest for tonight, the open council meeting? We'll move on then. Thank you very much. Item three. Which is procedural. So therefore, three point one is the confirmation of the prime minutes. If I may have a move please.
So moved.
Thank you councillor Murphy and a second to councillor Ennis, sorry councillor Murphy.
I mean, so you made it there for a hundred.
Thank you councillor Ennis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Murphy to close, thank you.
Consider a question.
Thank you. All those in favour.
Aye.
And against? Carrying unanimously. Thank you. So item three point two is a public question time. Three point two point one is responses to questions raised at prior meetings. A recommendation is there if I can have a move please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second at councillor Vani. Councillor Murphy.
Um, the response was appropriate to me.
Thank you councillor Vani.
Yeah, nothing done. Thanks ma'am.
Thank you. The questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Murphy to close.
Consider a question.
Thank you. All those in favour.
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Thank you. Uh, three point three is questions, oh no, no, I'm incorrect. Three point two point two is questions on notice from the public. Uh, the recommendation is there if I can have a move please?
So moved.
So you.
Councillor Moore and councillor. Um, Ennis, thank you councillor.
Oh yeah, it was nice to get a question on notice from the public. And I appreciated this question about the stadium and I think it was sufficiently answered.
Thank you councillor Ennis.
Yes, it's exciting times moving ahead and it's great that there was mentioned in there that there is. A website that provides information if people haven't gone into it yet. Go try and get on there and have a look because it gives you up to date information. And should all be happening here by March. What do you see man?
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? If not councillor Moore to close, please consider a question. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Three point two point three is questions without notice from the public. I do note we've got some people here in our gallery tonight. If either of you would like to come along and ask a question, you certainly may do so at this time. But if not. We will move on. Thank you. Three point three, questions on notice from councillors that are known. Three point four, notice of motions that is nil. So item four, we will move on to, which is the planning authority matters. Uh, I will now announce that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act nineteen ninety three. For the consideration of all reports under agenda section four. Therefore, four point one is two seventy nine Parker Street. Devonport, if I could have a move with the recommendation please.
So moved.
Councillor Vani. And second was councillor Murphy. Thank you. Councillor Vani.
Thank you ma'am. Uh, this one's a fairly straightforward change of usage for a middle. Year in a block of three there on Parker Street. Uh, just wanting to use for visitor accommodation. Um, it is worth noting there was the one representation concerned with. Uh, disruption, I guess, to their amenity and for their their dog being upset with the visitors, but as mentioned in the report. Um, probably no more of an impact than if the unit was just used for any other residential purpose, so. Uh, pretty straightforward thought one. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Well, I concur with councillor Vani, ma'am. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions from the councillors? Not councillor Vani to close, please.
Uh, thank you ma'am. And it was remiss of me, I should mention that even though it has approval now of the temporary visitor accommodation. Still can be used, that's just a general um. Regular rental as well, could still happen. I'll consider it close. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Are unanimously. Thank you. Four point two is ninety eight and one hundred Old Acre Street, Devonport. If I could have a move please. Councillor Murphy and a second here, first second councillor Moore. Thank you councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you ma'am. It's very exciting and goes to the confidence that the private sector has in Devonport. Um, with respect to this investment in a much, uh, in an area of great need. Um, location's a great location. Um, there was three representations that, um. You know, we responded to professionally and I understand those concerns, however. The fact that there is this massive shortage of childcare facilities on the North West Coast. Um, and I've heard of people driving to Burnie to drop their kids on it for daycare. Um, this is just a step in the right direction and, um, you know, very thought out plan. Um, and really looking forward to this one, uh, getting up and getting through it.
Thank you. Councillor Moore.
Yeah, thanks. I agree with councillor Murphy. It's one of our biggest needs is really good childcare and more spots for our families with young children. I congratulate the proponent in terms of it is in town and I can imagine people. Not just using the car park, but parking behind four ways there, going to the chemist, doing all those things you need to do with little kids. And at the same time picking up or dropping off their kids. So I think it's a great development for Devonport as a whole.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. Um, I'm just having a look at the pictures. I've worked on the pictures and it was. Uh, particularly the landscape plan, uh, that they put forward. I noticed that, and I probably understand the reason why, but they've gone with synthetic grass according to the plan or synthetic grass according to the plan. But where. I just wonder if people don't realise that there are alternatives and unnatural. Uh, natural turks. Uh, similar cost over over a ten year period, but probably, uh, better for the children. Uh, it's cooler, particularly if those trees don't grow. Uh, around that I'll see on the plan because they may not necessarily go in there. Um, yeah, so there's a, there's a whole lot of benefits, so you know, obviously, um. Improves air quality, reduces heat. There's a whole lot of things that natural turf does instead of the. Plastic grass which, um. Is popping up in lots of places. So if they can give it a thought. It might, uh, might help because it is a plan at all.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Any further comments, questions councillor Vani?
Thank you ma'am. Uh, as someone, um, what is it, only councillor here with a child in. Uh, childcare at the moment or even for the last little bit, so I can talk to this with a, um. A bit of authority because I'm in this current situation, using childcare and I know how hard it is. Um, to get kids into childcare. It's real, it's real bad. Um, we want parents to return to the workforce and that's only viable if you've got spots for their children to go. Um. We lean on our grandparents and there's probably a couple around the table that understand that more that. Um, grandparents have had to take up a huge share of that childcare and it's not always possible. Um, so to have a new facility with the space for ninety four, um, children. Uh, in our city, a really convenient space for a lot of people central is, um, is brilliant. I mean. I'm staying, there was a couple of representations, um, that have been addressed in the, uh, in the report. Um, but the greater good and the convenience that that location for families is going to be brilliant. Um, and childcare centres aren't just looking after kids. It's not just, um. You know, finger painting and stopping them from picking their noses and changing nappies, but they're early learning centres and it really does set. Uh, children up, including my own, for when they make that transition to primary school and kindergarten. It's not that they are adjusted, they, uh, can behave and play with other children and it's a great opportunity for them. Um, I would talk to one of the representations, um, issues with with parking and and the. Uh, potentially dangerous for the children in a car park. Um, when you're a parent. Driving into a childcare centre to drop off your child, you're on high alert because you know. That there are other children potentially in that car park that open doors on you or can run across the road, so. If there's going to be a safe place to go to a car park, it's probably in a, in a childcare centre, um, because of that fact. Um, and that was it. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Councillor Martin. Oh, I'm not on. Councillor Martin, sorry.
Uh, thank you ma'am. Uh, but there is a great need, uh, for childhood education centre and childcare centres. Uh, on the North West Coast, uh, and this application certainly addresses that. But it is a planning authority, so is it in the right position? Does it answer all the requirements that are set down by the planning? Uh, and it probably does up to a point. Where we require twenty parking spots, uh, in the plan, it says. Eighteen, but there are additional parking spots that we provide with the reconfiguration. Uh, so that sort of answers that. But there's ninety four children that will be, uh, could attend, uh, during that daytime. At various points in time, I would suggest, uh, and a total of maximum of twenty staff. So that's increasingly movements, uh, that are adjacent to the Kembling Street and Old Acre intersection. Now, if you've driven along Kembling Street, go to Old Age Street, turn east. Uh, it is very frustrating to get out there at the best of times. And therefore you add all this additional traffic, even though it probably would be staggered. Uh, I have concerns that it will place additional strain on drivers trying to get out. And patients, drivers trying to get out onto Old Age Street to turn east because of those additional. Uh, traffic movements. Um, I think that's a huge concern. Uh, I know from experience, I've waited there five minutes. May not say a long time unless you sit in the car for five minutes watching all the traffic trying to go past. And try and get a gap to whip out and get on with your business. Um. As I said, there is a, there is a great need. Um, all this type of facility. But on planning grounds, I have concerns that this issue hasn't been addressed, even though there's a traffic management. Plan in reality, I think the congestion there, uh, puts it at risk. Um, at this stage, unless I hear something to alter my thoughts, I might be supporting. Uh, the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Hallister.
So I'm going to support the recommendation. I think there's a great need for it and I think the needs outweigh any issues that may crop up. Um. Either the traffic changes that will be required outside the, if it's so forth and in the streets probably around there. Probably some of the people park around there, in some of the retail shops. Not far away, so some of the changes to the parking trial limits may make it a bit better than what it's, I still use at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. For the comments, questions from your councillors, councillor Shane.
Thank you ma'am. Um, yeah, I'll also be supporting the, um, application. Um. I think, um. Always is long overdue for, um. Substantial sort of new tenants and usages. Um. The foot traffic that this will bring into that sort of retail precinct, looking at, looking at through a commercial lens, I mean. Meaning, but, um, looking at it through a commercial lens, I think, um, it will be a good for ways. I can see that, um. It will sort of activate that precinct, um, quite a bit as well as the obvious, um. Need that it's catering for, which is childcare, which is directly linked to family's ability to lend money. Go back to work and, um. Pay the bills. So ticks a lot of boxes for me. Um, I understand that the, um. Traffic will change. I think we discussed it every time we get new development in the city. Does new impact on, um, on traffic, but I'm happy with the, um, the back management plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, for the comments, we're really fine. Um, if I might just add, I certainly welcome this organisation for coming to us and asking. That they can put a childcare centre into a much needed area in Devonport. Um. I understand that. It doesn't matter what we say yesterday going forward in development and progression. It's going to make us easier. It's just the, the, the process that way. Um. It, I see that we have trouble with a childcare centre trying to open up in Central Coast. Because it's in a residential area and the people that live there don't want the noise. So it doesn't matter where you put your childcare centre, someone's always going to have a problem with it. And at the end of the day, it's a much needed resource that we so have people screaming out. I looked at a Facebook page last night. Um, it's. Um, where do you go? How do you find places for people to, um, put their children? Some people are travelling to Sheffield in Devonport or to Fort Sorel or to outlying spaces and having to come back to work. Um, so even just in environmental, just the petrol, uh, the cost. The, uh, extra hours, the time, everything that happens to these people that have to just go outside of their area. To find our childcare, so that could not have worked. So I'm certainly grateful for this. Um, I look forward to it being, um, put into that spot. I think it's an actual, um, uh. Perfect situation considering where else it could have gone. So I certainly encourage it, um, in my opinion. So therefore I would ask for councillor Murphy to close the debate.
Uh, thank you ma'am. Um, and thank you fellow councillors for their comments. Um, and I took into consideration, um, what. Councillor Martin has raised and, um, and when I actually had a look at the site and. I don't think it's going to take too long for people to work out, um, that at different times of day, it's like school zones at the moment between half past two. And ten past three, you avoid them like plague. So I think if people are wanting to sort of. You know, it's not going to, if I know I'm in Kembling Street, I tend to head south if I want to go east. Because it's a lot quicker to turn left than what it is to try and turn left against traffic, so. Um, and I think with the alignment of the exit point, um, also addresses that, so. There'll be clear lines, so. So I think that the need is going to far outweigh the risk and I think people adapt pretty quickly to that, so. Look, it's a, it's a great development. It's just exciting that it's happening in Devonport. The location's fantastic because, and I agree with. Uh, councillor, deputy mayor, um, councillor Shane, um, the, the fact of the, the potential impact it'll have in the four ways precinct. Which will, you know, um, potentially, you know. Increase the vibrancy of that space too and maybe encourage some, um, some different offerings there as well, so. Um, having said that, ma'am, consider a point.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against?
Uh, aye.
Thank you. I'll have a shout hands upon it. Uh, for those in favour, we have councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis, councillor Hollister, councillor Vani. Councillor Moore, councillor Shannon, councillor Charman and against councillor Grant. Thank you. Uh, therefore it is approved. We'll move on to item five reports. Item one is the proposed amendment. To parking by law, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Vani and councillor Murphy. Thank you. Councillor Vani.
Thank you ma'am. Um, this is fairly procedural, uh, amendments to our parking by law, just to, um. Taking into consideration the changes that we're using with our parking technology. Uh, sort of moving away from some of those about to display parking infrastructure, uh, to, um, more. Uh, what's the word for it? Tech savvy, um, technology using number plates, so pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Ma.
Um, yeah, thank you ma'am. As councillor Vani has said, it's a legislative requirement to ensure that we are compliant. Um, under the law, um, so, but it also goes to show again. It is becoming a smart city, um, which is only going to be more attractive for, um, for people wanting to come and live here, so. Um, yeah, it's. Again, natural progression for Devonport City Council leading the way.
Thank you. Any further comments from the councillors? If not, I'll ask councillor Vani to close.
Thank you ma'am. I started with new technology, but, um, I was in a car park in Manchester a couple of years ago and it was already there, so. I hope we're just catching up, but it's, uh, good to see. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Therefore, all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Thank you. Five point two is the splash aquatic centre fees and charges. If I may have a move please.
Over there.
Councillor Hollister and a second.
Sure.
Councillor Murphy. Thank you councillor Hollister.
All of the places were there, but I think sending those news to the citizens, a small increase. Which is after the course of today's economic, economic situation.
Thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Um, thank you ma'am. Yeah, five percent. Um, it's a little bit about inflation, but I can imagine. Um, their costs have gone up, so, um. We're, we contracted with Belgrave here until twenty twenty nine. Um, so, you know, they've got to be able to achieve their business.
Thank you councillor Vani. Further comments from the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Hollister to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carrying unanimously. Five point three is the annual planning budget estimates. All the information is there if I could have a move please?
So moved.
Councillor Murphy and a second, Joe?
Very good.
Councillor Hollister. Councillor Murphy.
Well, that time you're here again, ma'am. Um, and look, I think it's fantastic result. Um, if we read a lot of the media reports, um. We are in such a better financial position than any other council along the coast and potentially within the state, so. The fact that we've got an annual plan. Um, it's detailed and it's professional is what it is. Um, it's just, you know, again. Highlights the fact that Devonport City Council is just so much further in front of our neighbours. And the fact that decisions that we've made, um, are only going to benefit, um, the community long term. So I'll be interested to hear from the rest of my fellow councillors and then provide more in closing.
Thank you. Councillor Hollister.
Yes, I'm supported this. Um. This is just another step in a living city. That's how good the city is progressing. There's a lot of things out there that are in the pipeline that are coming out that. Most of the public don't know yet. Um, they're all positive, so. Recommend that. Recommendation.
Thank you. Further comments from the councillors? Councillor Moore?
Yeah, um, I think it's, um, important to bring up our capital expenditure for the next year. It's a lot of money, but if we have a look at what it's going to, it's really a nice balance of. I'm doing all the things that councils should be doing in terms of stormwater and roads and things like that, but also it shows vision. In terms of the projects that we are starting and contributing to, so. I too am, uh, really proud of where we're sitting in terms of, uh, what we're putting into capital this year.
Thank you. Councillor Vani.
Yes, thank you ma'am, echoing some of what councillor Murphy's already said. Um. I think when we have those discussions about rate increases, uh, we do have an eye, an eye to either side a little bit to see. Uh, how neighbouring councils are faring and it does make me, um. Proud and smile a little bit that, uh, Devonport's able to achieve what we do with the modest increases that we can, um. Uh, pass on or set for our residents, so I'd like to, uh, thank the council officers on a, another job well done, putting. All of the, um, the budget documents together. Um, really enjoyed our budget workshops, then we were discussing them. And, um, have looked forward to seeing what those big capital projects are. So the two that stand out for me. Uh, one of them was one of the early meetings that I went, uh, came to as a councillor and we. Uh, approved a development up Kelsey Tier Road and I remember saying then that this intersection is a problem. Um, and this has no direct relation to me saying that, but it's really great that we've now got the funding there available with obviously support from. State growth to upgrade. With obviously support from state growth to upgrade that intersection, the, um, Chelsea Tier Road and Mersey May Road intersection, so. I'm really happy that that is, uh, is now on the books and will, will happen next year. Uh, the other big, uh, ticket items there that I thought were important, um, are a splash at the. Aquatic centre, they're re-lining the pools and then also upgrading, um, the, the heating, uh, HVAC. Um, it's such a, a great asset, um, for our community, but not just the residents of Devonport, I think everyone around the table's. Um, well versed in understanding that the residents of Devonport actually subsidising that facility for everyone in the wider region. Uh, I'm there at least twice a week, my, both my boys are doing swim lessons. And I was gonna mention in the, uh, previous, uh, agenda item that it is expensive to, to take a family. Uh, to the pool, like it's, it's not a cheap thing to do, um. It, you put one child in for a swim lesson, it's twenty dollars for a week, but that also gets an adult in. And if you've got another child that's, uh, under four, they can eat for free, so we were doing that for a while and. You know, twenty dollars a week for a swim lesson and a visit to the pool, and then. Uh, the real advantage of that is you can go out any other time, um, included in your twenty dollar, um, lesson fee, so. I go to the pool twice a week and it doesn't cost me, I don't, I don't, um, pay for it, but. Um, Vince's bank account's starting to get drained from the twenty dollars a week, he's paying for a swim lesson, um, so that's great for me. Um, they're the two, uh, well, the two big spendings I was quite, um, happy to see. Um, the three point five percent, uh, increase represents about a dollar seventy, uh, for the average. Uh, household, average, um, yeah, household in the municipality, which. I know they're adding up and, and cost of living, but I think the council's done a tremendous job at trying to keep that as balanced as possible. Uh, and as fair as possible, so well done everyone, bye, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, further comments, councillor Ennis?
Uh, thank you, uh, a couple of, uh, couple of things that are highlights for me, um. Really pleased to be making a start on, uh, on, uh, enhancing the mall. I think that's gonna be, uh, something that, uh, all rate payers and visitors alike will notice, and hopefully that. That goes well, I mean, that's, we're doing a part and then we're gonna build on, so that, that's gonna be, uh, something that. Many people will look forward to and, uh, no doubt have commented on the plan, hopefully we can do a really good job of. Uh, of improving and building nature into the, into that space, which many people ask for. I think, uh, one of the, one of the, it's a minor but, minor item in the budget, but so in. Uh, strategic, uh, goal one, we are actually having a, uh. Decision adopt to build a nature in strategy, which is a fairly small item. But it could have a huge benefits for our city and, uh, for the livability of. Everyone who lives here and for people who come, so that, that's great. Uh, the other thing I would say, the, uh. And people of certain age could realise how important toilets are and making really nice toilets down, uh, in town at Stewart Street. Fantastic, that is gonna be, uh, uh, you get excited over toilets, some people do. Uh, but I think, uh, what we've got there now could really do with that, uh, fixing up, so it's gonna be. Uh, a very good thing, and I think if we do that and, and the other toilets down the back, uh, of, in the other cinema car park. Uh, pick, picks those up too, it'd be fantastic for, uh, for our locals and visitors alike, um, I think it's, um. It's gonna be really good, so, um, I think the ability for us to, uh, keep rates at three point five percent. But also maintain service levels and people aren't gonna lose or miss out on stuff is a really good thing. Uh, in terms of what we can do around the city, that's, that, that is amazing, uh. When you look at how tight some, um, some other councils' budgets are and you sort of look and. And, uh, that what we can do and what we are managing to do. But lots of people said, oh, they're broke, they're never doing good, or what's, you know, they're in debt, well, uh. It just continues to, uh, be a good news story, uh, Devonport City Council and what they're doing. And, uh, so that's fantastic, I, uh, and, uh, just in, in terms of the, um. The, the rate increase of three point five, it's, it's great, but we can also do something for our. Rural community and, you know, ensure that they're looked after as well, uh. By, uh, limiting the rate increases for, for them to make sure, um, look after them. As well as, uh, the general road pay, so it's a good thing, so, thank you.
Thank you, further comments from the councillors?
Question?
Yes, no, please.
Probably the general answer, so, you know, I don't feel that the file that is, is led it. Of urban councils compared to rural ones where, uh, power is more than S R A N councils and get way back and certainly all. You know, following it and what the other councils do, certainly sort of, maybe then.
Through you there, and that the government did, uh. Investigate looking at making changes to the way the file that is rated, uh, I think it was last year, that they decided not to progressive changes. So the current system, uh, remains, but in the exact, a different rate between, um, urban and, and rural five districts.
Thank you, further comments or questions from the councillors? Councillor Shane? Sorry.
Well. Um, yes, I, I think the, um, the budget's got a nice smooth trajectory over the last couple of years. And, um, moving into the next budget year, um, obviously. We are, uh, very lucky to have some funding at state and federal level around the, um. Under ports down at the block, um, that's gonna be our next major project, and I think it's gonna be a game changer for us. And the region, um, and although we've put in a lot of work, um, to achieve that funding, I just like to note that. Help that we often get from state and federal government, it's, it's appreciated, um. I'm very impressed with the work that the council team have done, um, it was fantastic working with fellow councillors. I think it was a sensible budget, we're not, um, skimping on maintaining our infrastructure, um. And staying true to our strategic plan and our goals, so I'm very happy to, um, support the project too.
Thank you. And further comments or questions from the councillors? Um, whilst I'm not welcoming the proposed rate increase with open arms as stated in our paper. Now, overall, we'll point out three point five percent is one of the lowest rate rises in the state. The average household, this means a coffee a month. With costs escalating on all household requirements, I understand we're all tightening our belts. And council has been doing this consistently, certainly aware of how. Part of our amazing staff, we tirelessly put to our council as a sensible budget. But still allows us to achieve great outcomes during the next financial year, it still holds its will going forward. We're a council that has been modesting rate rises to our residents over the fourteen years I've been on this table. Our growth rate, housing and developments are outstanding. And we will continue to shine in this area, I have no doubt, which shows confidence in our city. I thank Matthew and his team on providing our community a sensible budget and prudent rate rise as a result. Now I will now turn to councillor Murphy to.
Um, thank you, ma'am, and thank you my fellow councillors, um. The next surplus is always the big thing, big ticket item, um, and again. We'd excel when I first came to council, I think we were talking a modest surplus of around about twenty eight thousand dollars. Um, so six years ago, um, whereas now we're looking at a sort of, a net surplus of somewhere around, um. Yeah, a hundred and eighty million dollars, a hundred and twenty.
A hundred and eighty five.
A hundred and eighty five million dollars, so there's, um, so, you know, which is a fantastic result. But more pleasing is the fact that we've continued to invest not just in capital expenditure, but we're investing in our people. And, and, and evidence of that, um, is the, the commitment that we've given to, again, um. Having Devonport strive forward as the cultural hub of the region, um. And I think that investment in, in our people, um, has resulted in. The outcomes that we're seeing, because we're able to, an organisation can attract the highest caliber of people, um. Which is, um, only benefiting the rate payers of, of our great community, so. I think, um, it's not just about capital, I think it's the investment that we've made in people. And I think the great players of Devonport are now seeing the benefits of that, um. We are, there, there's no doubt that, uh, in, in coming years and, and, and next council, um. You know, we'll have to consider. Where we are with our debt situation and, and look to employ strategies to deal with that, um, as we move forward. But again, uh, as we're sitting at the moment, we're in a healthy position and we're able to, you know, sustain those debt levels quite comfortably. Without having to, uh, provide any shock rate increases, um, to our rate payers. Um, again, I think what we're going to see here, um, with this budget and the confidence that. Private enterprise is going to see in the growth of Devonport and continuation of that growth. We are going to see a lot more people wanna come and live here, it's just going to be the thing, but it's going to really, you know. Reduce a bit of the pressure with respect to, um, any of those potential rate hikes, so. With that, congratulations to Matthew and the team, um, it's a good budget and I commend it for all to support, thank you.
Thank you councillor Murphy.
Is it two, la?
We've just closed the debate, councillor Ennis, thank you. Uh, so I was last, all those in favour?
Aye.
Right, against? Carry unanimously, thank you very much, everybody. Five point four is the tender report for contracts at Smart Pack, Smart Park, inspiration project, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Oh, oh, that was so close, councillor Hollister and councillor Murphy, who's the second, who's that, all right, thank you, councillor Hollister.
Supporter. Thank you, this contract, uh. Quite obvious, you're having to go all through the car parks and see the number of people that are having trouble with meters and. Car park machines and a few times it's quite, they're really have to get something that they can fix either. They even, um, yeah, so I've already had an enjoyable life that he went out of a long story car park, so. Very popular at the time, very obvious to, uh, instructors out of date. This should teach them.
Thank you, councillor May?
Uh, thank you, ma'am, considering we, that's the, uh, change to the parking bylaws, um, earlier. Um, I think this is just part of the process that we need to go through, it's still really interesting now that forty percent of people still use coins. But then they can't use coins because the equipment keeps malfunctioning, so, um, again, causes frustration, um. And yes, so I think, um, look, it's just what we're gonna do, and. It's a significant investment again, but it's gonna make things a lot easier on.
Thank you, any further comments from councillor Shane?
Sorry, you're, um, I just had a question through you, ma'am, regarding the, um. variance between your two tenders, um, a bit higher than usual, so if I could get some information to why that might be.
Mister, Mister Bill, can you hear up?
Through you there, um, what we did with this tender process was go out for a scheduled rates, uh, with a number of options and semester's round. To try and plumb by the tenders, find out everything we could, and then, uh, the revised tender amount is. Is, so it's what we're ultimately going for, um, to, to, I suppose in, in first part, but yeah, the. The tenders we should have. Operational ongoing costs included as well as, yeah, a, a, a number of options.
Okay, thank you. Further comments or questions from the councillors? If not, councillor Hollister to close.
Through it close.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Five point five is the zero commission split transition plan, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Hollister and a second, please. All at once.
I'll second it then.
Yeah, full, ma'am, thank you, councillor Hollister.
This is an upgrade or further upgrade on zero electricity transport. Just hope they don't burn. Pretty hard to pull out apparently, but, um, do have recommendations there, support.
Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Um, thank you, ma'am, I'll be upfront, I don't believe in it, but it's part of what council has to do, so. It's there for everyone soon.
Thank you, any further comments or questions for the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Hollister to close.
Through it close.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Item six is information, six point five is the workshops, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Vanny and a second up?
Second.
Councillor, councillor Vanny.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, there was some, um, uh, good discussions with the, uh, topics on the agenda of that. Uh, workshop last, not earlier this month, um, it was really nice to get an update on that, um, didn't force saving. That was, uh, passed on in the question on notice earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore?
Uh, yes, thank you, I really enjoyed the update from Gran Zans and Loes and Fishers. Um, just a great community organisation that really is trying to address in a contemporary way the, um. Food shortages, uh, shortages and supply that lots of our residents of Devonport actually do struggle with. So congratulations to them for their, uh, forward thinking and looking forward to seeing some more of their projects.
Thank you, further comments or questions from the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Vanny to.
Consider it closed, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Carry unanimously, thank you, six one two is the main's monthly report, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy, the second was councillor Ennis, was that? Thank you, councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, having an extremely busy month, um, your dance card must be pretty full, um. There's a lot of it, but, um, uh, good job, it was a pleasure to host you. I'll have you attend our, um, the Rashad Dunport's North fiftieth year anniversary.
Amazing event.
It was a fairly significant event for our club and, but, um, it just showcased. Um, the connection our club has had with that, our community over fifty years, so, um, yeah, so it was a, a good event, but. You've been very busy.
Thank you, uh, councillor Ennis?
Uh, thank you, um, I'd like to highlight, uh, your, your, and you and CEO visiting, um. Uh, Geelong, the Greater Council of Geelong, it's a fantastic opportunity for our, uh. Our city as the gateway to Tasmania and everyone that comes on spirits comes by us. So, uh, us to, uh, work within, in closely with Geelong, uh. In the way that we can both Ben and us, uh, advantage, advantage and take advantage of, uh, the opportunities we have. Would be really good, would be forward to, uh, doing a bit more work with the Geelong City Council. And I know that you guys have already opened up the, um, the lines of communication, which is fantastic. And, uh, it should be really good, uh, a whole lot of very good things, but, um, I'll just leave it there.
Thank you councillor Ennis, any further comments or questions from the councillors?
Councillor Shane? Thank you, ma'am, um. Just wanted to note, um, while you're away, I did manage to snap the royal ticket to the, um, energy conference. Um, that, that was a fantastic event and, um. I'm looking forward to, um, later on this year when there's enough decision made on Varanese. Uh, looks like there's gonna be a whole lot of, um, investment unlocked in the state and the region, uh, if and when that goes ahead. And so thank you very much for the ticket, I really enjoyed it.
You're welcome, um, and thank you for being the reliable deputy mayor stepping in to be acting your role while I was not available. So thank you very much, any further comments or questions from the councillors? If not, I will ask councillor Murphy.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, and, um, kudos to deputy mayor and, um, councillor Shane stepping in. At the opening of the Gordon Remus Dam, what a fantastic thing that was. It was a real achievement, what the Devonport City Strivers Club has actually delivered is fantastic. And, and the deputy man, although there was some issues with the wind and the hair, did a fantastic job. But, um, it was, it's a, um, a, a real opportunity for Devonport to, um. Capitalise on such a great, a great asset to, um, the community and the, uh, yeah, just fantastic, so, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, uh, all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Against? Oh, I can't say it. Uh, six point three is the CEO's report, if I could have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor Barney and the second to second. Councillor Ennis, councillor Barney.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm, uh, sure the CEOs giving plenty of inquiries from, uh. Biting political aspirants, uh, lately to try and get, uh, a picture of themselves opening or. Uh, making the announcement in Devonport because we're such a positive city and a, and a progressive city and a get things done city, so. Um, looking forward to seeing more of the CEO on the paper in the coming weeks and the man, obviously. Um, there's an update I saw that you had with, uh, Ron Waitman from the E D school. Did you let us know how close or how that project is progressing when we can see? That area sort of what finishing up? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. I currently think they're looking at term two next year to, to, um, the up and, up and young. Um, once the building is a little more, uh, advanced, um. That we are nearly, we're long to be happy to showcase ourselves and organising that tool. The meeting that Dave was just discussing, some of the interface with the public area around the building is going to. Um, have input into that and, uh, support doing around, make sure that the two, um. S- single stick because of public, you know, school space and you'll look at organising tools and.
Thanks councillor Barney. Councillor Ennis?
Uh, thank you. Uh, yes, it's quite imposing doing so far and it'll just continue to grow, I imagine. Uh, just, uh, the other, the other comment was. I noticed that CEO met with, with, uh, T T Vine, CEO. Uh, how are they progressing and, uh, how's it look? Have they got a plan of what's going to be happening over there? Yeah? And is it going to be shown to the public? Online even?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. The meeting wasn't regulated to the east, um, uh, the eastern whole development, um. We were actually talking about the, um, approach that we've made. Yeah, to T nine, T T nine and the government around bringing new spirits through this board on their way over. Just currently exploring whether that's a possibility or not. And we also would actually have Geelong agree at that, that meeting, so. But our understanding is that, yeah, it works progressing in East Devonport, but, um. Every hearing manager is sitting on the, the, um. Uh, Transport Committee that's been set up, the Traffic Committee, um, starting to see some progress and.
Thank you. Now that the bridge in Hobart is built, I would have thought it might put a bit more priority from the state government. Anyway, no, thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the councillor? No? If not, I'll ask councillor Barney to close.
Uh, yes, Mayor, consider it closed, thank you.
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? Very unanimously. Uh, so item six point four is the monthly operational report. If I could have a move please. Oh, councillor Moore and the second up?
Oh, second, but councillor Barney, councillor Moore.
It's the best report of the night. I love looking through this report for all the different things that Devonport City Council is doing. Um, I want to bring special attention to the Karen Young forums. I've had so much feedback from parents at schools at how beneficial that forum. Was and how practical it was as well as being feedback. I want to bring attention to, once again, our meetings and convention centre bookings. Uh, up again on what was budgeted and that's been every single month this year. So well done to that team and it shows. How much our meeting rooms are actually used and needed. Uh, also, the Facebook marker was lit. Oh, not Facebook marker. Just wanted to clarify two things with that. One is, um, purple is just one colour of choice. It won't always be lit purple. And my second question is, I mean, second question is, um, the ones that are in at dawn. Do they light up too? They're little, oh, and I just realized they weren't last time. Great. Yeah, purple's the cut, only colour. Um, and one question about the complaints. I just noticed that I haven't noticed before that there was ten complaints. By type that were in the other section. It was like the far bigger section. I'm just wondering. What are the, because it seems to be the biggest amount of complaints. What are they?
Thank you, the stone. Uh, there's varying reasons for we have that other section, but I'm quite happy to have a look and maybe break that down a little bit more for you so you can see. We've certainly got scope now to be able to do that the way that that report's done. Um, but yeah, they're mainly just those smaller complaints that we have, so they don't really. Need a category on their own, but quite happy to make that a bit more clear for you.
So they're just like very minor things?
Yeah, 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 just, um, as you can see, the ones that we list are the ones that we probably deal with. On a more regular basis, I guess, so, but yeah, I'm happy.
It was just odd that there was ten of them.
Yeah, yeah.
That's fine. They're just minor things, don't worry.
But no, certainly we can break that down a little bit more for you.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barney.
Thank you, Mayor. That is, uh, always a highlight on the agenda to go through the operations report. And pick out some highlights, uh, for the month. And, uh, interestingly, I've written down things that, um, councillor Moore didn't, so I get to. Uh, launch into those. It was, um, really pleasing that, uh, council was able to. Uh, facilitate a career stay here for, um, students from Rice High School. So, uh, obviously. Really great local high school that, uh, all the best teachers tend to go through. Um, and the feedback I got from the students that it was that they really enjoyed that and it's, um. It is important to, to understand that, you know, council is quite a diverse organisation and there are, uh, opportunities, so. Hopefully open some eyes for some young people and I saw that, uh, hopefully that. Um, programme will be extended to other high schools in the future. I'm sure it'll be, uh, just as enjoyed. Uh, I did notice, uh, looking, casting down my list of, uh, kids going on work experience as a student. Um, from race coming to do work experience here as well, so now it's really great that the, um, the council has that, um. Ability to support students in the lower area and, uh, I'm sure she will gain some valuable experience during that time. Um, there was a couple of the visits that, that are worth mentioning, the, the governor general, um, so. Fantastic. Apologies for, for not being there. I didn't think, uh, seven and four year old would be able to behave themselves. Such a prestigious, uh, uh, what was it? An official civic reception, that's what it was after, yeah. Uh, Vince and civic receptions don't normally go very well together, uh, so apologies for missing that. Um, and you wouldn't think that the governor general would be the second most important visitor to our city, but we also had Runan. The, uh, of course, the Tasmanian Football Club mascot come and, uh, spent some time with students. So, um. Hopefully the footy club doesn't just stop at a mascot and we progress past that. Um, but yeah, wouldn't have thought the governor general was number two on the, uh, VIP list for the month. Uh, and this is the only overlap, the entrance marker, which, uh, I've, I've called it. Um, since it's been lighting up a beacon, which I think was the intent of the artist and, um, tend to visit. Uh, family a lot, uh, to the east of us. So I've, I've seen that one a lot in the boys. Um, you know, Ruben being seven and four, like every time we're approaching it, they're like, that is the beacon on, is the beacon on? And this genuine. Excitement. Um, I have told them that it has the ability to change colour, um. And then I'm just, I just have to download the app for that and we'll be able to do it on the way past and presumably that's how we change the colour with. Yep, so can't wait for the, for that to, to hit my phone, so I'll be able to do that on the way past and. Tell them we can make it, um, go like strobe light and, um, shoot it up into the sky like a lightsaber. So they're really excited about those upgrades when they occur, um. And yeah, that's, that's it. The beacon, the beacon is on. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Barney. It's always a great, uh, a summary about your Porsche. Thank you. Any further comments from the councillors? Councillor Man?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to reinforce, um, what councillor Barney said with respect to Runan paying him visit. It's just a shame the state level government decided to take us to an election, um, and put all that in jeopardy, so. Um, you know, hopefully we can, um, we can see that come to fruition, um, as an important thing. And on page seventy three of the report, um. The waist was just a bit hard to read because it's back to front and upside down. Um, so if we can just have a look at that, on page seventy three, the table that's there, it's sort of read backwards, it reads backwards. Um, yeah, so, and I know it's always tricky because they're all screenshots that you've got to. Sort of put into the report, but it's valuable information. It's okay when you stand on your head to, that, that way it works, so you can actually read it. But, um, yeah, a good report. Um, the other thing is, is the, um. Promotion and support for the Mary Binks Wetlands, I think is an important one, and I think for councillor Ennis. Um, looking to build nature in, they'd be a really good opportunity there to sort of focus on that space because it's, um. It, it's quite an asset to, to East Devonport and, and, uh, yeah, it probably doesn't get us, as, as a. A bigger free kick and if we can promote that a bit more, um, I think, um, yeah, um. Our residents on the other side of the river will, uh, thoroughly enjoy that space.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Further comments from councillor Shane?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, you're probably going to mention this yourself, but, um, just wanted to note, um. The governor general's comments regarding meeting Devia members at the civic reception, and I think earlier in the day. Um, I was just so proud of, um, that group and the way they, um, are so articulate and. Knowledgeable and clearly the G G was super impressed, so. Um, the future is in great hands with, uh, with our Devonport youth, yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. Um, uh, a comment, a question. Uh, first one was, uh. Yes, I do agree that the meeting rooms here are used a lot. And, uh, they're improving to get a space in because I, I'm attending a meeting on Thursday night of Build Nature In. It's a. Opened meeting for the community and it was a bit of a battle to find a spot. In amongst all that things, but if you are available at, uh, five fifteen on Thursday night. In the caller room, everyone's about, everyone's welcome, so, uh, just letting you know. Uh, just moving on, moving on, I, I've got a fair idea what one of those, uh, some of those ten, uh. Complaints are, or what was it? Uh, risk and compliance and. But I, I believe there'd be at least a couple of them from people complaining about scooters in our city. Uh, with the issues of, uh, riding, uh, and people wearing, uh, dark clothing, et cetera. Really dangerous, particularly for the bus drivers and people around, and I know we've had some accidents with them. I'm not sure if it'd be possible that, um, the CEO could. Write or do something to the police or maybe we need to, um, maybe we need to somehow. Get the message out about safety and how important it is, you know, because. I'm sure most people here, if you're in your car or walking around, they whiz past on those scooters at. High speed, uh, often without helmets and often in very dark clothing. And, uh, I'm not sure what we can do as a council, but just alerting to the police would be really good and, um. And trying to do something about it and. I'm, I'm not sure what we can do about it, but, uh, if we don't try, it's going to be continually unsafe, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, further comment? Councillor Hollister?
Question to the, or request to the, um, Bruce, the safety officer. Um, straight connect the pathway when you come to the northern end of it to come down onto. Spartan Road. Um, that's coming down a slope, not the kids on bikes and scooters could wind up on the road before they're real, so probably there's a little bit of a barrier. Right at the end of it so that they can't, can't fly out.
Yeah, I'll hear you, Mayor. Um, that is actually being looked at at the moment. Uh, we've been in discussions with our infrastructure teams and it's actually a, a barrier that's been put in. That's, I'm talking about the same area that you are. Um, yeah, we, um, yeah, so that has been addressed.
Thank you. Uh, further comments? John, I will, um, certainly, uh, just re- I, the deputy mayor's just said. Byron, uh, students from just, it was so impressive on the night of being the governor general. Um, it's quite an emotional moment, uh, for a lot of us. We were just so impressed and proud. Uh, we didn't, there was no, um, real, uh, uh. How do I explain this? We didn't, we didn't tell the children what the governor general was going to ask them. They didn't know what they to expect. They were very nervous. They went in there, um, and just behaved so impeccably, of course, because they're just nice people. But then she started asking them questions. What do you want to do with them? How's this going? And the way that they spoke and the way that they, um, spoke about this city. With such pride and how impressed they are with what's been happening in their, you know, young lives. Um, uh, was just a really rewarding moment. I, I, I know looking at the, our CEO. Of how pleased he was with what they were saying. And so it was a real moment for us to kind of be rewarded. And it was very gratifying, um, and yes, our future is in really good hands. If we had more of them coming along and, and, and speaking to us and doing what they do, we're just so lucky to have that, um. Connection to our young people and, uh, yeah, run very well by Ruben Moore. And, um, yeah, can't wait to see what else we can get to this group. It's very exciting. So thank you, um, and I will ask councillor Moore to close.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just in closing, I want to congratulate the Devon, the Devonport Cup Committee. For the Devonport Cup weekend. It was just a fabulous weekend. So many people come into Devonport. They stay in Devonport. Every ground possible was used, um, and while I know. Um, sometimes that can be a little bit controversial, just well done for the Devonport Cup Committee for, um, persevering. And running a great weekend with a very big mixture of weather from torrential rain to hot sunshine. Uh, yeah, well done. To credit to our city.
Thank you. So therefore, all those in favour? And against? Very unanimously. Thank you. Uh, item seven is posed session. If I could have a move of the recommendation, please. Councillor Murphy and councillor Barney? Councillor Murphy. Thank you, councillor Barney.
I can, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? If not, I will ask councillor Murphy to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour? And against? Therefore, we are closing the, uh, council meeting for the twenty fifth of June at. Six thirty two P M. Thank you for those attending the public gallery. And just quickly, may I just say? Karen Henson, your last meeting tonight. And I know you, she's like, what are you going to do to me now? Can I just say, congratulations on, uh, a well deserved retirement you're going to. Go and increase the benefits.